Thank you all very much. It was kinda cool, I just sat down and everybody got quiet, that was kinda nice. First of all, I'd like to call the City Council meeting for April 11, 2018 to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, I wanted to reference, we recently, I received, and maybe others had it too, there was a local church, St. Paul Lutheran Church, has a, sends out a, a, kind of a quarterly news magazine, it gets actually a lot of circulation. And I was made aware of that, and the reason I want to mention it is, it talks about our chief, Paul Sikorski. And it me, it mentions the fact that when he became Davenport Police Chief, he made the comment that he's here to serve, and that's the long and the short of it, I'm here to serve the community. And Pastor Marty, who is the pastor, the senior pastor at that church, we were in a group that we have formed called Clergy for the Community, there's about 25 pastors and community people, and the chief and I are part of that group. And the chief mentioned a story, and he said, and this is Peter Marty's words, "When Sikorski meant by serving was certainly something other than a bureaucrat strutting around police headquarters with a badge pinned to his shirt. To his way of thinking, serving the community is about dedicating oneself to meeting as many people as possible between sunup and sundown, it means going to bed and waking up with the well-being of Davenport residents, every Davenport resident on one's mind." He recounted a story, and, of a young man that regretfully had to be arrested, car thief, about 15. And when the chief brought him into the, the holding area and the cell, instead of locking him up alone, which happened, but he spent some time talking to the young man. And as time has gone on, he keeps asking the young man, "Would you like me to come back?" And the young man has said, "Yes." And there's been interesting exchange of ideas, and, "How did you get here?" And I think one of the comments that the chief recounted was that, the young man said, "I, I'd definitely like you to come back, because no one ever's listened to me before." And I think it's, it's one thing, and we've talked a lot about, if someone in our community does something illegal, they'll be arrested. But that's not the issue. We can't arrest our way out of these issues that we're dealing with today. And Paul's approach has definitely demonstrated that, in the end of the, the article, talking about the details of those relationships, but he says, "I don't know what you make out of this behavior by a chief of police, but his commitment to one's, this one thief's life is profound. Colleagues of Sikorski describe his integrity as exemplary, he has an engaging and winsome character, and his idea of serving is noticeably, has a noticeable biblical ring to it. It makes him wonder," asks, reports Peter Marty, "what young person trying to find his or her way in the world will I need, and I will next decide, is worth my time and love, or will you next decide is yours." With that in mind, we all have an opportunity to make a difference, and let's take a moment of silence to think about that. Thank you, and thank you Chief Sikorski. Let's all stand for a moment of our pledge of allegiance, and Alderman Kuhl will lead that.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Alderman Kuhl. Jackie, would you please, or no, it's Tiffany. Tiffany, would you please call the roll, please?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Kuhl.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much Tiffany. And again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our City Council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance, and all the others who are viewing the meeting on way of, by the way of the television, or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We really are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. You will have an opportunity to address the City Council under Public with Business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end, and when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone, and I know you all will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, thank you again, and will an Alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for March 23? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. They are approved. Is there a City Administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, City Administrator Spiegel. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 4, 2018? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. We have a couple things that we're gonna be doing this night, and then get into the body of the meeting in a little while, but first of all, we have one appointment and two proclamations this evening. First, our first appointment is an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, and that's Karen Guest, is a new appointment, and she will be joining that group, just so you know, it's civil service. There is a 30-day waiting period, she's met that 30-day waiting period, so everybody can make sure they have a chance to vet that candidate, and that has been completed. So, is there a motion to approve that commission appointment? It's moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, and we'll welcome Karen Guest to our group. We have two proclamations this evening, and we'll be starting with, let me pull them out of my thing here, we're gonna read, the first one is one on, let's do that one second. We'll do the National Library Week, and Alderman McGinnis will lead that, read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Proclamation. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools; and whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation and the world; and whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies; and whereas librarians and libraries look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect with patrons' needs; and whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing STEM programming, maker spaces, and access, and training for new technologies; and whereas librarians are pioneers supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status; and whereas libraries transform us by connecting our diverse community to resources that inform, enrich, educate, entertain; and whereas libraries and librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, we Mayor Frank Clips and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 8 through April 14, 2018, as National Library Week in the city of Davenport, and encourage all citizens to visit one of our three outstanding libraries this week to explore what's new, engage with library staff, and see how libraries transform, dated this 11th day of April 2018. I move the proclamation.
The proclamation's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. I think Steve Eming is the Chair of the Library Board, and he's gonna come up and accept. And Malavika's gonna come as well. Let's stand and get a picture. Why don't they have Malavika in the sun?
Yes, we should.
They won't look at us that much.
(Laughter)
And I just, I had a chance to be at the augmented reality station yesterday, the grand opening of that, yeah, that space, so if you have a couple of words, you'd like to do that, that'd be great.
First of all, thank you Mayor Clips and members of the council. Alderman McGinnis, well read, thank you. Libraries do lead, and the Davenport Library is certainly one of those leaders. There's a, we have a wide variety of programming for a wide variety of ages, and invite everybody to come down, take a look. If you ever have a question, you know, librarians are there to answer your questions, a lot of history going on at the library, and one of the new things I just learned about today is that you may have known that the library, you can check out technology to take home, well now they have Retro Techno. You can go down and, and check out a carousel slide projector, or a cassette recorder. So you got any cassettes laying around in your drawers that you, you know, wish you had something you could listen to them again? We got it there, so, and a record player too. And thank you very much.[666.88][666.88](Applause)
There is a, and thank you Steve and Malavika, thank you both for being here. There's a big event coming up in the near future, and we're gonna have a proclamation that's recognizing that, and we're gonna ask Alderman Gripp to lead that and read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is my privilege to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas the Q2030 movement has created four pillars for the Quad Cities to try to achieve by the year 2030, whereas those four pillars are identified as being a cool, creative, connected, and prosperous place. Whereas, as part of the connected pillar, a two-day initiative called the Quad Cities Big Table has been established. Whereas, it is the goal of the Big Table to unite 5,000 Quad Citizens around 500 tables during the weekend of April 20th and April 21st, where Quad Citizens are invited to talk about what matters most to them, and how individually and together, we can make our community stronger and more connected. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Clips and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim the weekend of April 20th and 21st, 2018, as the Quad Cities Big Table Weekend in the city of Davenport, and call on all Quad Citizens to participate in this community-wide initiative to further connect our community so that we can become a cool, creative, connected, and prosperous place, dated this 11th day of April 2018. I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, it is approved. Tonight, we're gonna have Decker Plain, Jasmine Newton-Butt, Maura Downing, and Marcy Mendenhall come up and accept the proclamation. Ladies, the challenge is to keep Decker under control, so.
That won't happen, Your Honor.
Well, let's, let's accept the proclamation first, make it official. Come on in here, everybody.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Please, please. No, you get the middle.
Don't put me in the middle, for God's sake. That's a wrong move.
Kurt, if you'd make me six foot four, and there's a promontory.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks Jasmine, thanks Marcy. Now I'm not sure who wants to hold the proclamation, we'll give that to you.
No, I can't do that, I've never touched one in my life.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, and beloved staff. Nobody ever says beloved staff, so, I thought I'd get that out of the way. We are delighted to be here, accept this proclamation. As was said in the proclamation, on April 20th and 21st, we have a rare opportunity to have all of us as Quad Citizens get together and talk about what would make us a better place, all across the Quad Cities. And it's really exciting, in fact, the library has been extremely generous to create public spaces for us to have public meetings, and we're delighted that the Davenport Library has been very gracious host, and given us both days, and given us lots of tables that people could go to. So, it's real simple, we wanna have you, as the commercials all say, we wanna have you all host a big table, or participate at a big table, with people you know, and people you don't know, preferably who you don't know. And find out what people think about their neighborhood, their community, the region. And we only have one question that we want to ask them, what would make the Quad Cities a better place? That's the starting point. Anybody can participate, anybody can participate anywhere, you can host a private table in your home and have dinner, you can go to a public location, you can have a private table at Village Inn, wherever, they should pay for that commercial, by the way. Wherever it is you want to have, 10 to 12 people come together and talk about us, and how we're gonna make this a better place by 2030. It's real easy to do, you can go to the website, QuadCitiesBigTable.com, you can click on Host, you can click on Participate, a drop series of dropdowns will occur to prompt you what to do. And the only thing that we ask, there doesn't have to be any note-taking, we're just gonna survey people afterwards, if they give us their email, and ask them about their experience, and what was talked about at their table. We're gonna create a report that talks about what the themes were, and then we're gonna report that back to all of us. And if it relates to government, maybe some information will get shipped to Davenport City Hall, or Rock Island City Hall, but it doesn't have to relate to government, it could be any, anything in the chamber, and, and anything, anywhere. We'll try to make referrals if appropriate, where people can solve problems in their neighborhoods. So Jasmine's gonna talk about the tables that she's hosting, and invite you all to those as well, so, I'm gonna slide across, 'cause I'm unaccustomed to public speaking.
Thank you, Decker. Good evening, my name is Jasmine Newton-Butt. As some of you may know, I am an attorney here in Davenport, also practice on the Illinois side. I do a lot of community service and work with a lot of organizations, two of which are hosting tables. The first is the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, Council 10, it's actually out of here, Davenport, Iowa, and we will be opening up our doors at our hall, and I invite all of you to participate. The other is the Greater Quad City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which will be hosting two tables on that Friday, also inviting everyone to participate. I invite council members, the mayors, anyone that's interested in learning about what we are doing here in the Quad Cities, and how we can work together. I also want to invite everyone here today. The Big Table is not just for those who are already in positions of leadership, those that we normally see are big companies, it's for everyone. That's what makes it such a unique opportunity, is because everyone's supposed to come around this big table. And the idea is that this is a movement, one that the Quad Cities has not seen before, a movement where it's bringing people from all walks of life, all different socioeconomic backgrounds, and it brings this diversity, which really is what makes the Quad Cities so unique, is that we have a lot of diversity here, and it gives us an opportunity to all work together, and make this place a better region, and move forward. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today, and to invite all of you. I invite you not only to participate in the tables that I'm hosting, but also in tables all around, and even challenge you to host your own table. You can host it at a public location, or you can host it at a private location, anybody can host a table, it's very simple to sign up. You go on the website for the big, QuadCitiesBigTable.com, and the instructions are there. So, I urge you to get involved, even more so than you already are in the community, but get involved and meet people you may not necessarily talk to on a regular basis. I think that if we learn from each other, we will certainly be able to work together and make this a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Maura?
Good evening, my name is Maura Downing, and I'm with John Deere, I'm based at our world headquarters in Moline, Illinois, and I'd like to invite all of you to join the Big Table we're hosting at Deere &amp; Company. We plan to host 250 to 280 high school students on Friday afternoon, April 20th, at 1:00 PM. That's not a table you're gonna see on the website, we're doing that to protect the students who are registering, we're working with the superintendents and the high school principals in the area, but we welcome you to join that table, and to hear what's on the mind of the, of youth in our community. And we're eager for the afternoon, it will last about an hour, hour fifteen minutes, and we hope to see you there. And feel free to let Mayor Clips, myself, Renee know, if you have any questions, we welcome your attendance. Thank you.
Finally, Your Honor, you can get one of these if you host a table.
You get a great swag bag that has all your needs in it, it has name tags, and stickers, and wonderful signs, we all want you on social media promoting this, right, even before, but also after. We want to make sure we capture all of those wonderful things that are happening as well.
Thank you, and again, it, just very quickly, make sure everyone understands, this is open to everybody, as Jasmine made a great job to this group, the TV cameras were facing the other direction, and looking at you up there. So it really, the people all in the audience, it's actually this way.[1187.72][1187.72](Laughter) But, yeah, no, everything is fine, but just want you to know, it is an opportunity, I'm hosting a table, and I know a number of others are involved in, involved in various tables, so, thank you for the effort as well, and thank you for all the work you're doing. Appreciate it, thank you. We have one presentation this evening, as you may remember, back when, when this group predominantly took office, we started recognizing local businesses, we, we hear about John Deere, and they do great work in the community, but there's a lot of small businesses and local businesses that also have a major impact. So, we're gonna be recognizing a local business tonight, and, you know, we talk about cool, connected, and prosperous, this is a great example of one business that epitomizes all those things. Some of you may know Sean Moeller. Sean, his family's been around for a long time, and I'm just gonna read through the information, but Moeller Knights is the name of the company, and that was started over 20 years ago, when a local entrepreneur and music lover, Sean Moeller, put on his first show on his family's farm on Utica Ridge. Since that time, as a college student, he founded and respected online music hub, Day Trotter, which literally has people from all over the world, basically recording, coming here, being stopped along the way as they go from California to New York, and, and as well, he has opened two music venues, The Raccoon Motel and Codfish Hollow. He will soon be opening a third venue in the Quad Cities called The Rust Belt, which will hold nearly 5,000 people. On any given week, Moeller Knights puts on five to six concerts across the Quad Cities, with the sole intent of enhancing the culture in the area to big-city levels, and making Davenport and all of the Quad Cities a bona fide music hotspot to rival Nashville and Austin. Moeller Knights currently employs three full-time and part, and four part-time employees, but more importantly, is literally impacting thousands of people. And we talk about, how can we find ways to keep our young people here? This is one of those ways, but also reinforcing it for all of us, as Sean and I were talking the other day, this is something, the people that come to Codfish Hollow, for instance, but at The Raccoon Motel, and all of his venues, literally a cross-section of age groups, and, but really keeping everybody here. So, with that, I want to bring Sean up, and present the award to him this evening. You're making great stuff happen, we can't thank you enough. You're that young entrepreneur that we need in this community, we want to thank you for that, and as it reads, "Local business, the foundation of our community, recognizing the unique businesses of Davenport, Iowa, Moeller Knights, April 2018." Congratulations, thank you.[1376.12][1376.12](Applause) And everyone who goes to a concert's gonna get one of those pictures. Yeah, sure. Let me leave that here for you, and you can take that with you. Great.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, everybody. I'll make this break brief, I'm not very good at this stuff, but, you know, as, as the mayor said, everything I do is kind of with the sole intent of making this place a better, and, you know, all it takes is participation, so, we stay busy, we try to bring the coolest and best bands in the world here, to the Quad Cities, and, you know, all it takes is getting people in the door, so, you know, if, if everybody's sort of willing to come out and check out music, we, we cover all genres, anything that you could possibly like is coming over to one of my venues, and, all of our shows are seven to nine o'clock, so it's not something where you have to be out super late, and not be able to get to work the next day. I'm imagining Alderman Gripp was probably in bed by 9:30 Monday night, after the show, so, you know, it's one of those things, it's just a fun place, every night's really good, we keep the quality very high, and, you know, hopefully everybody will come out and try it once or twice, and I guarantee you'll probably like it, so, thank you very much.
And also, part of our east, part of our new, our downtown is really being revitalized, a lot of energy, and you're a big part of that, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, absolutely. Take care.[1469.12][1469.12](Applause)
Okay, we now have some petitions and communication from many of my colleagues, or, or myself, and we're gonna start with Alderman Dickman, who chairs our community engagement effort.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick reminder that I am having a ward meeting at Truman from 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow, it will be in the cafeteria, but if by chance you are not going to that, you need to ask yourself if you are going to be a hero or a villain for the Bar Crawl fundraiser that the library is having. They are kicking off at Main Street at 5:30, or I guess, they're starting at 5:30, and then they'll start crawling towards bars at 6:00 PM, so if you're downtown, make sure to check that out, and if you are so inclined, I definitely encourage you to put on a costume, have some fun, and help raise money for the, our fantastic library system.
And you're going as?
And, and I'm going as Jean Grey, after the ward meeting.
Jean Grey.
As Jean, X-Men.
Jean Grey.
Thank you, and I hope to see you there.
I didn't know either, but that was good. Now I know. Thank you, thank you Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one more reminder of the third ward meeting, on Saturday, April 14th, at 10:00 AM, Cedar Memorial Christian Church, we'll be learning about how to become a recognized neighborhood, and answering any other questions that you have about what's going on at the city, and I hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't know the X-Men had names, I just, alright. Ms. Gleason, I know I've asked before, and I'll continue, 46 and Fillmore, I know we keep addressing that and keep dealing with it, but it keeps not staying where it's supposed to, so, if there's anything else we can do, I'd like to talk with you or others about what else other options we have, 'cause it's continuing to deteriorate and get bad, so I appreciate talking to, see what we can do about that. Thank you.
Great, thank you Alderman Mattson. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, those are great words you spoke of our police chief, Paul Sikorski, and he's a great guy, and we got a great police department, but I get a little concerned when you talk about the 15-year-old that's going to jail. We got 15-year-olds that are stealing cars and tearing apart our community, and, you know, they go to jail for a reason, somewhere out there, there's a victim of their crime, and the victim seems to be forgotten, and it gets worse and worse every year because of our court system, but we got a great police department, and we gotta keep them in our prayers, because every day they go to work, you know, they're gonna be chasing some 15-year-old future criminal, who wants to shoot up our community. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you Alderman Ambrose, and to that end, it's interesting, the timing of that. Today I attended, last week, we, or in our last session, we did a proclamation on Crime Victims Rights Week. I was at the event today, a crowded room full of people, and we, exactly what you'd mentioned, obviously there are people committing crimes, but there's a lot of people that are affected by those crimes, and we need to make sure that we continue to reach out and support them. And I think, more importantly, or equally importantly, is the first responders and the people there, the officers, the social workers, and all the other first responders also are impacted, not only by the work that they have to do, but by the lives that are affected. So, we want to thank all of you in that process as well, and make sure we're all focused on not only the criminals, but also the people that have been affected by that. And I know you just got back from an event, we've been talking about that as well, we won't, we'll get more feedback later, but a way to in fact deal and prevent some of the individuals, whether they be 15, 18, or 50, but more importantly, the young kids in this particular case, with that juvenile assessment idea, Assessment Center, so we'll hear more about that as we move forward. And one last thing that I have, you know, we, we talk about our great departments and our accredited departments, but I want to read this very quickly, a letter that we received. It was addressed to the Public Works staff, and some of us were included in that letter, but it reads, "My name is James Orr, and my wife Mary have lived at 4721 Wisconsin Avenue for 40 years. During that tenure, we have had many occasions to interact with Davenport Public Works personnel concerning many subjects ranging from snow removal, trash pickup schedulings, and signage concerns. We have never been disappointed with the professionalism demonstrated by each and every individual we called on or met in person. Our most recent phone call contacts with Linda Roberts, Deb Orth, and the exemplary and timely work ethic, work ethic demonstrated by Tim Hazen, Pat Lane, and Rick Mechenick have been exceptional and merits acknowledged by two grateful citizens of Davenport. Our initial call to Linda to address and record a problem in front of a house was handled in an expedient and professional manner, within 25 hours, it was inspected and outlined a trouble area with paint, and within another short period of time, during a cold and snowy morning, Tim Hazen and Pat Lane were removing the damaged surface spoils and replacing and compacting with fresh adder." the damaged surface spoils and replacing and compacting with fresh asphalt. Like a choreographed ballet, all this activity was occurring while working in and around moving vehicles passing within feet of their activity, which was quite impressive. Our request to repair the deteriorating section of our street was addressed by all city staff in a very professional, expedient manner. We tip our hats to you for the great jobs you do on a daily basis, no matter the weather or the time of day. Please extend our thank you to all who participated in recording and resolving our concerns in such a very timely manner." So, thank you to all the Public Works staff, Nicole, Brian, and all the other staff. Please continue to pass on our congratulations and thank you for all your work. So, thank you. Anything else from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Next to individual items of discussion on our discussion agenda, our first one this evening is, and again, I wanted to clarify for those, last week, we had a very extensive agenda. We went through every item, and if there was no concerns, we answered all the questions. Those were moved on, and we'll be approving those later on the consent agenda. These are questions that have come up that may have a little more need for discussion. So, here's the first one. Resolution for case number P-18-02, preliminary plat Sang Meadows on 20.9 acres, more or less, located west of Northwest Boulevard and north of 46th Street, containing 58 residential lots and one outlot. Property is owned R3, moderate-density dwelling district. Is there any public with comments on this topic? Seeing no one, is there anybody on any of the aldermen have a comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move the resolution?
It's not moved.
Now, I think the order was now, any discussion from the alderman? I think we have Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great project, and it's been a work for quite a while. I just, I can't believe it's taken this long to get to the city council. You know, this property was owned by one of our former aldermen, Joe Sang, and Joe has done so much for our great committee and our community over the years. You know, you just, it's really unmeasurable what he has done, not only as an alderman, but as a state representative and senator. So, great project, and I look forward to seeing it move forward. And Alderman Mattson's did a great job marshaling this thing forward. Good job, Mike.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, last week, I had just brought up some concerns with the development being three cul-de-sacs as opposed to being one street that goes around the Sang property. And I just had asked you guys, as my colleagues, to look at the proposal and then also look at what Zach Peterson had proposed, and it was some, it was initial thought I had as well, that, you know, why are we doing three cul-de-sacs? And as you look at this, the process as we set this initial plat, is that once we approve that, that is what is going to go in. So, at what point are we, as elected officials, looking at connectivity, walkability, long-term maintenance costs, long-term replacement costs? And I don't know that we are having, in my three years on the council, or two and a half years on the council, we haven't had that scrutiny of preliminary plats. We just haven't. But I'm also not certain that we've given good direction to our staff on what level of scrutiny they need to have early on, so that when it gets to this point, that the policy has set what we want as opposed to it just coming before us and then saying it's too late, you know, to stop this development. Now, I also want to be very clear, this is a good development. This is housing at a price point that is important. It's in northwest, it's in northwest Davenport. I think it technically would qualify as an infill development. I'm not saying this is a bad development that needs to be stopped. I'm just saying it's a development that could be better, and my personal opinion is it would be a better development as one through street as opposed to three cul-de-sacs.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Discussion's good, but let's be clear, and so everybody understands, there has been a lot of discussion. I have met many times with neighbors, builders, the developers, owners, staff, many different types of staff, to include the city administrator. Walked the entire area, to every house in the neighborhood, and we've had numerous discussions over a year or two about this. Cul-de-sacs are liked. I understand there's a little concern with snow plowing. We can deal with that, the few days that we have to plow, but we want people to come to Davenport. We want people to move into nice developments. We want people to come here, raise their families, and do that. This was proposed, it was looked at, it was discussed, and liked, and the plat was, quite frankly, in my opinion, the developers, the owner, and everyone proposed many different ideas, and this is what it came to be. So, I appreciate the comments about discussion. That's a good thing. I appreciate everybody. I'm a little concerned that one person gets to put an opinion in an agenda where maybe that lane isn't there. If staff wants to give an opinion, then everybody needs, above that, needs to give that opinion too. But I hope we all support this, as I will second kind of what Alderman Ambrose said. Joe Sang, great leader in this community, both sitting here and at our state. And I'll remember one specific time where he, there was something that was going to not work in this city, and through his single efforts at the state, got multiple millions of dollars, if you can say that, multiple millions, right? Many millions of dollars to get this project going, and that isn't the decision that we build this just because of that. It's a legacy, and it's a great thing, but there has been a lot of discussion, and all the neighbors and everybody's happy, and I walk cul-de-sacs all the time. As part of other walking, it can be done. Thank you. So, I ask everybody to please support this.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor, for another opportunity. You know, just to mention a few things. Our diversion tunnel, sewer tunnel, wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for Joe Sang. The industrial part wouldn't happen if it wasn't for Joe Sang, so was the transload center. You know, he shepherded these things through the state, and, you know, we're a much better community for it.
Thank you. Again, I would just want to echo, I think we all are very grateful to Joe Sang. Sadly, he has passed away, and this development really is somewhat of a representation, is a kind of a capping of his career. So, with that, I think Alderman Gripp has something else he wanted to mention.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I just wanted to clearly state to City Administrator Corey that I would like this to be a topic that comes back to us on a Tuesday agenda, something where we start to have this conversation on, you know, what we're looking for in residential development. Thank you.
And again, in my role, just we heard, that'll be, we're talking about bringing this kind of an issue back for a discussion. There's no real direction at this point, other than that we will discuss it as a group. Great. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluw?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
No.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and we'll move that forward on this issue, and we'll be revisiting it again in the future. Our second one is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a purchase agreement for the sale of city-owned land parcel L-0009-28B for the Tag Building Development Project. Is there any public with comments on this issue? Seeing no one, is there an alderman will move the resolution? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by any of the aldermen? Seeing none, roll call, please. I'm sorry. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this is a tremendous opportunity for our community, and I look forward to this moving forward.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please, Tiffany.
Kluw?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. A resolution, our third item is a resolution ordering in sidewalks related to the 2019 sidewalk construction program. Is there any public with comment? Please, again, your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Shai. I live on Ryan Court in Davenport. Part of the Ryan Court Owners Association here. I think on your agenda, you have three parcels. We're only here interested about the one that's on Elmore Avenue between Active Endeavors and Senior Star. It's an undeveloped parcel, about six and a half acres. There's no sidewalk there. There are sidewalks on the other side of the street. Somebody has made the proposal to have us install a sidewalk there. And while we agree that there should be sidewalks in the city where there's a need, where there's a use for the sidewalks, like somebody last time, I think, mentioned, there was no sidewalk down outside Mid-City High School, and kids were using it a lot, and they needed a sidewalk there. So, certainly that would be understandable. The parcel we're talking about is a section of the city that really has no pedestrian traffic whatsoever. It's cars going by, whizzing by. There's nobody riding their bikes. I don't think I've ever seen anybody ride their bikes on Elmore Avenue in that area, or any area on Elmore Avenue. Rarely see anybody walking over there either. So, certainly if there's a need there, and it kind of meets the cost, we can understand that. But here, it seems the cost initial and then ongoing, it's kind of expensive when there's really no need for a sidewalk there. Last time, there was, somebody mentioned, there was a discussion about the connectivity, and certainly we want to have sidewalks connect different areas of the city, but even on Elmore Avenue, there are several places where there are no sidewalks, not just this particular parcel. Forty-sixth and Elmore, there's no sidewalks there. Now, that's an undeveloped parcel, so that's understandable. It's like ours. But there are some other parcels south of us, just a few blocks by the Jiffy Lube, Panera Bread, there's no sidewalks there. On the other side of the street, there's two Mount Foster Company buildings, there's no sidewalks there either. So, to connect, I don't know how we would connect, because there's no sidewalks down there. Connect to what? There's no sidewalks on Kimberly Road either, so it doesn't connect to anything. We handed out a list of no sidewalks. They're really just in our area, just a real small part of northeast Davenport, kind of between Eastern and Elmore and Kimberly Road and 53rd Street. And there are a lot of locations with no sidewalks in that area. There are three areas that are undeveloped, so that's understandable, waiting for development to happen before requiring a sidewalk to put in. But there are many places with no sidewalks where people do use the sidewalk, much more than they would on Elmore. Eastern Avenue, there's some significant stretches with no sidewalks on either side of the street. Jersey Ridge Road, no sidewalks on either side of the street. You can see where people do use or would use a sidewalk, because there's pathways there. There's no pathway on our parcel over on Elmore Avenue. So, we just question, we wonder why we would put a sidewalk in here where there's no sidewalks in other places. I just don't think it, we don't think it improves the connectivity that much, because it connects for maybe a few more blocks, and then there's no sidewalk. So, we again respectfully request that you do not require us to put a sidewalk in, because we think it's somewhat excessive in cost for just a real low benefit to the number of people that would be using it. Okay? Any questions before I sit down?
No, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Will an alderman move the resolution, please? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion with the alderman? And I see Alderman Kluw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sidewalk policy is kind of a new issue for me to deal with, so I wanted to make sure that I understood it as well as I could, and I may be naive in some parts of this, so I would appreciate my fellow council members to help me out if I'm missing something. I read through the information that was provided to us, and had Joe and Sally Harper nice enough to escort me out to the area and take a look at it this afternoon. And the contention is, is that this is not a normal sidewalk area. And the way to really get a picture of that is to actually walk that and see that it's not McCollum Heights, it's not, you know, it's not Windsor Heights. It's different. Talking about their front yards are on Ryan Court. Elmore is some 60-foot from the residences. There's a large buffer area that was deeded to the association as buffer, and Pheasant Creek runs through that buffer area. It's a flood area. And so, the contention is that it's different. I walked it, and as to the issue of who's using it, is it being used? There were no bicycle tracks out there. There were no footprints. It very clearly was not being used. And I think, you know, I did a presentation at WIU last week. I was lucky enough to talk to the honors class out there about policy, and it seems to me that policy doesn't exist in a vacuum. It exists to serve the people. And to me, it appears that in this case, there is, we have a policy, and we have a state and city policy, and the purpose of that policy is to provide a safe, accessible route for pedestrians along streets within the city. There's a good reason for that policy. It doesn't really seem to apply in this particular portion of Elmore. I think that the burden of what's being put on the three residents there on Ryan Court exceeds the value of what it is that we're trying to do by enforcing this particular municipal code. So, I do believe that the residents have a good case here. It makes sense to me. If there's something that I'm missing in terms of fidelity throughout the city, et cetera, I would like to hear that at this point, but my support goes at this point for the residents. I think they have a good case.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You put it quite well, Rich. Good job, and I agree with you. You know, we've, my time on the council, have allowed developers not to put sidewalks until the city deemed it necessary. And I just, I don't see it necessary at this time. This is just like the cul-de-sac issue. You know, we got staff that wants to have sidewalks in, and the neighbors don't want it. Neighbors want to have cul-de-sacs. Something from staff says they shouldn't be, so I'm with the neighbors.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two questions. Well, one question and a comment, and I guess I'll ask the question first. The list, we have a list, I don't know, it doesn't say where it's from, of where there are no sidewalks. Could staff, and I guess you've seen this, I don't know if you have, and you tell me. I don't know where it came from. In any case, and if you don't, if you're not comfortable responding tonight and haven't seen this, then, you know, just tell me that. But if someone from the staff could talk about, you know, our policy, yes, there's not sidewalks everywhere, but sort of our policy for how these roll out. And then I have another comment after that.
I would suggest, City Administrator, please, maybe you could do the initial response, and then we'll hear from the others if we...
Yep, I'll take a cut at it, and then if Nicole needs to add in some pieces, but the council prior to this council gave staff very specific direction that we needed to start calling in sidewalks. I think we started it really on Eastern and that area. So, there was formal direction from the body to start looking at these missing links. I think engineering spent probably the better part of a year going through old plats, where the developer did have responsibility to call these in. We also take complaints or citizen inquiries about missing links, and that's how this one got on the list. So, from a staff position, when we have major arterials, that is where we want to make sure there is the availability of being connected, just because there's not a sidewalk there now, or people aren't creating a walking trail, doesn't mean it wouldn't be used if it were there safely.
Thank you. Alderman?
I had one other comment. So, thank you for that, and thanks for clearing that up. I'm new to the council, and so that's good information. I guess one point I would like to make is, in reading over the materials from P and Z, this buffer area was deeded to these neighbors. I understand the desire to be, you know, for the protection, but it feels a little bit like, well, we don't want anything developed, you know, to our east, but we really don't want sidewalks there either. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that works well in both worlds. I understand the challenge of this, but sidewalks are very important, and unfortunately, our city has developed in many places where there were not sidewalks, and it's not a very walkable city. So, I'm in support of things that are going to make this a more walkable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I have a question for Nicole. I'm just curious. I believe that this was on the list, and I think I heard... was on the list, and I think I heard it earlier. But I just wanted to clarify. Is this on the list based upon complaints or requests for, to have it in this area? And then I have another comment as well.
Yeah. All, everything that we order in is based on request. And this area is actually one of the frequent areas that we get requests for snow removal in the winter as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my other comment, when we went through a couple of years ago, maybe it was even a year ago, and redid the bus routes, we have a lot of people here. And for those of us who are here, this is, Elmore is a busy area. And we did hear from many people that this is, they wanted it to be walkable. So, that's an area that they wanted to shop. They wanted that opportunity. And that's why we're looking at that. This is a complaint that I have received many times, not just in this area, but the lack of sidewalks in, in the city. And so, that was part of the conversation that I remember having as well, that we wanted to create, to fill in those gaps. But specifically, this area was requested, because people wanted to be able to walk it. And their concern was if, I know it's on the other side, but it's a busy street. And so, they couldn't, they didn't feel safe to be crossing the street. So, that was the request to have it on both sides. So, that's just my memory, and wanted to share with those who weren't here before. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rossen?
Quick. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes. So, I was involved in the council then, when we had the discussions about putting in the sidewalks. And it's really about connecting so that people on bicycles or who are walking have the ability to walk safely on either side of the street. I appreciate your comments, that you really don't want to have the expense of developing this. But unfortunately, your land backs right up to Elmore. And there are people that walk there. I drive Elmore a lot. I see people on bikes. They're not using your grass. They're walking in the street. And they really need to have sidewalks there. And the end goal of all of this, because Administrator Spiegel and Alderman Tompkins are correct, the end goal is there will be sidewalks put in. So, a lot of these places on your list will have sidewalks. So, that is, that was the plan from the last council, was to put these connectors in, so that our city is more walkable for people who, well, and ridable, for people who use bicycles and who want to walk. And Elmore is a busy street, and it is important to have sidewalks on both sides. And we are aware of the areas that there aren't any sidewalks. So, stay tuned. There probably will be sidewalks there soon as well. So, I do support getting, putting the sidewalks in, because it's appropriate, and it goes, it's in alignment with our plan that we had a year ago. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? Seeing no one. Roll call, please.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
No.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. This resolution is adopted. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items, all items on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
No.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. This resolution is adopted. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items, all items on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?